It is Monday, August the 14th, and this is the regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present, and the notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We need to have our invocation and our pledge, and then we will adjourn and go to our graduation of our summer school. So at this point in time, if you will stand, please. Is Mr. Eddie Berto Padilla here? Well, I guess maybe we'll just have the pledge, right? We will just have our pledge at this point in time. Is our person coming here for the pledge? There they are. All right. Good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Introduce yourself.
Face up. Yeah. Hi, I'm Harley Morville. I'm with the JRTC from West Kentucky High School. I'm currently the commander.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you. And at this point in time, we will adjourn and go to summer school. Congratulations. Congratulations. That is congratulations.
Let's do it.
Let's do it. And we have a board moment, I believe. Mr. Carbo wanted to speak.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam President. Actually, we have a couple of notes. I put a flyer on your desk, and I also shared with the cabinet. There's been a lot going on with public education, and we just went to a meeting, Mr. Seward and I, with the North Texas Workforce Development. That's easy to say. And it was very interesting. It was sponsored by Core and presented at the Dallas ISD Career Institute. Our host was Dallas ISD. And they have pulled the North Texas cities, their Chamber of Commerce and their Directors of Business Development. Now, it was very interesting because they gave us some numbers to look at and why it's so important that we should invest into public education. As you know, there were no real bills looked at in this past session that affected public education. And there may be a third session. There's going to be a third special session in October where any education bills that may be put forth are going to be looked at. The intent, of course, is the governor's intent is to look at what he calls vouchers or education savings. When we look at education, you know, it was very important that the numbers they shared, they talk about how it measures in the economic return, social return. Each single additional dollar that the state invests in public education has a return of $56.76 in social and public returns. We're talking about the returns to, like, for example, direct private sector benefits from students that are graduating, multiple facets of direct production, government revenues and programs, and the reduced social cost of health care, welfare, that kind of programs that the governments, the local governments have to invest in. So it was very interesting to have some other sessions that will be done in the future. And we had a great representation from North Texas. We also had a chance to have a panel of leaders, civic leaders, that talked to us, and we did a little roundtable asking about questions that really affect, what is it that affects the cities when it comes to innovation, critical workforce supply, and overcoming challenges? And the common denominator on all this is it depends on what kind of education our kids have when they go to the next step, which is the business world, or the education world, or the military world. And all that is affected by what we're seeing right now. It happens to be that we're going to look forward to see what that special session brings forward because we have to get some help. Anyways, I'll give it over to Robert, Mr. Seward, if you had anything to add about those meetings that we attended.
Well, the meeting was very productive, and as you said, we had panelists up there. They were mainly business folks that worked with students in public education around the North Texas area, and they're very high on our students, and they have built in some internships with these students. And the success they're having with that, in fact, we talked to two of the folks that one of them we're bringing here is already working with Mesquite ISD with our nursing program that we have. One of the things that came out of the meeting, we were talking about the special session, public education and funding. As you know, the state had a surplus of low over $33 billion this year. That's with a B, billion dollars. And they allocated $17 billion of that in the special session for property tax reduction, which I'm not opposed to, and that's fine. But that left $16 billion that's already been allocated to other things, except for about $4 billion that they left in the budget in the event we get some funding for education passed in a special session, if it's not held hostage to vouchers. That $4 billion, when I'm talking about it, is over a two-year period. It's not for one year. So that's $2 billion a year. You have 1,035 school districts. You have 5.5 million students. That's not a lot of money when you're talking about the money you need to do to up the salaries for your teachers, take care of operations. And in fact, if they were to give us the proper amount, up to inflation amount that we've had over the last few years, the basic allotment would need to be increased by $1,000. All they're proposing when they have the special session is $50, the first year increase in the basic allotment, and $90 the next year. Folks, that's not a lot of money. So the big thing that came out of this meeting, they had all the districts represented there. They asked all the districts, how many adopted a deficit budget for this coming school year? Eighty percent of the people in that room had to adopt a deficit budget. Luckily, our goal was not to have a deficit budget this year, and our great staff here found a way to make a budget that we were balanced and to give our teachers and staff increases in their salary. So that was a success for Mesquite ISD, not so much for some of the others because they have, everybody has different needs, different operations, and different things are going on. The key is that we need to be advocates. All of us need to advocate. If they call the special session in October, we're going to ask you to make phone calls to assist us in talking to our legislators to push money towards public education and improve it. And we're going to ask for that support because we're all in this together. We need to take care of our community. We need to take care of this district. We need to take care of our staff, and especially our students. So again.
Oh, my goodness. We are very loud tonight. But you know what? You know what? He's right. Everyone sitting out here and people that are watching us online, you're voters, and it's very important that you cast your vote for public education. We make a difference. We have 5 million kids as compared to private education. That, to me, we have to take care of our own. So we're asking you to be an aware voter. And hey, you're the people, we're the people who elect people to the legislature, and they know, they have to know, you're watching and you're listening. So please, please. Listen one more time.
I have one more thing. I don't know. I thank everybody here, and I know a lot of the central staff. We went to the opening day of school this year on Monday, last Monday, and I will tell you, I was impressed, and I was excited, and I was encouraged by the excitement I saw not only in the teachers, especially at the elementary and the high school where I was at, but the kids coming into school this year. It's the highest excitement I've seen in all of them in the last couple of years. Of course, we went through the pandemic. But I was very much encouraged, and I thought, how exciting this is going to be. I went around and met every teacher in one of the schools that had time to do that, and they're just really excited about dealing with these kids. And the kids came in. Now, we had one or two kids that didn't want, they didn't want to stay. This is their first time in school, but they deal with that, and they did a great job at it. But this, to me, was a great opening this year for Mesquite ISD.
Yes, I was at a school, and it was, it's fun. I mean, what can I say? The first day of school is so much fun. Yes.
Madam President, also another announcement besides that, but I've had the pleasure of working with the Council of PTAs this year, and it's been, it's been very eye-opening. It's not the same Council of PTAs that we had 20 years ago. So much has changed. But we have a representative, the name is Matthew Hall from Raise Your Hands, Texas, who's going to speak to the delegate assembly to talk about all the changes that we saw in this legislative session and what's the expectation for October. So I know our principals will be there and our delegates are more than welcome to see that.
Yes. Is there anyone here from PTA that wanted to address?
PTA, yes. Our president.
Good evening and greetings to the board. My name is Josie Carden, and I serve as the president for the Council of PTAs here in Mesquite ISD. You may recognize me. I have served for the last two years as a treasurer, and so this is my first year as the president. I'd like to take a minute to kind of touch base on PTA and our mission. Our mission is, at the council level, is to support our local schools and their membership and their roles through PTA, Teacher and Parent Association. When you join a PTA, I'm bringing this up because our membership year just opened August 1st. So if you haven't joined your local PTAs yet, now's the time. And I brought forms. So with that, PTA looks very different on different campuses. You mentioned the fun of the first day of school. At elementary school, it looks a lot different, right? We have parents involved that want to come help. They want to work in the lunchroom. They want to do those things. At the middle school, we find that the roles change. Our kids don't want us there anymore, right? They want to be more independent. But as parents and as teachers and as community members, we still have that important role of representing our children. We still have to cover that voice for them. And as a parent, we have four lovely children at Mesquite Schools this year. I want to remember that, that every membership that we have is a voice for our students. It's a voice here locally. I can talk to your principal, you can talk to your teacher, but you can also use that voice statewide. Texas PTA is our governing agency. So Texas PTA, the local council, and then each individual PTA. And I'm sure you're aware of this, but Texas PTA is the one that calls out when we have special sessions, and they're the ones that say, hey, this isn't good for public education. So as a parent, I may not know exactly what's going on, but I know that I want what's best for my kids at their school. And so Texas PTA offers that support and that information for us. And so we, as a council, pass it on to our locals. Membership, last year, Mesquite ISD closed out slightly over 5,000 members. 5,000 sounds like a great number, but pre-COVID, our numbers were over 7,000, closer to eight. So my goal this year is to increase membership. At the council, we don't take memberships. We only collect for our locals. So I am pushing for membership joining at the local schools, your elementary schools, your middle schools, and your high schools. I want to involve the community as well. So we not only want parents and teachers, we want community members, business members, people that have input and should have input on our schools and our children and our voices. So that's my push for this year is membership. If you haven't joined, please do so. But also, we're going to reach out to community members and parents, and we want to see an increase in membership across the board. We are working towards a voice for every child. That means that every child in our school has an adult representative, a member of PTA, saying, I want to have a voice for that child. It's not going to happen this year, but we're looking at a five-year plan. We have 40,000 students, right? 5,000 to 40,000, we have a lot to do. But I'm happy to work with this board. I'm happy to work with this district, and I hope that we can get there in our timeframe.
Thank you. PTA plays such an important role in our district and for our kids. During the legislative session, MISD PTA Board and parents went and advocated at the legislature for us. So yes, they are a very powerful part of MISD. So thank you very much. Looking forward to a good year. How's that? That's a good thing. Okay, now it's time for our audience portion. Ms. Jobe, is there anyone to speak?
I'm not ready.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our consent agenda, this is an action item. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by the same thing? So move, so pass. All right. Reports to the superintendent, personnel.
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. So today, we have two items coming from administration. The first item is a report, and the second item is an action item.
Yes, it is.
So I'll outline the report first, and then before we move on to the action item.
Sure.
So we have several positions that we wanted to recognize tonight, and we're going to start with the executive directors. And so, Dr. Hensley, please approach the lectern.
So it's my pleasure tonight to recognize before you all some promotions in the Personnel Services Department. And so I'm going to start with Mr. Emilio Duran. He's our new Executive Director of Personnel Services. He earned his bachelor's degree in Spanish and Education from the University of Tulsa and received his master's degree in Education Administration from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. He's completing 25 years in education, all with Mesquite ISD. He's a proud graduate of North Mesquite High School. He served Mesquite ISD at the elementary, middle, and high school level. He was an elementary bilingual teacher at Ty-Singer Elementary, high school teacher and coach at North Mesquite and Horn High Schools, Assistant Principal at West Mesquite High School, and Campus Principal at Vancston Middle School. He began working in Personnel Services as a director in 2018. So congratulations, Mr. Duran.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking the board and Dr. Rivera. Rivera, I would like to acknowledge my wife, Barbara. She's my person and my rock. Stand up a little bit. I was just going to think, what do I say? And being here 25 years, it's been a great honor, and I just made a list of all the people that I'd like to thank over the 25 years that I've been here. So it might take a little bit. No, not really. I'm just gonna, you're like, wow. I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity to continue to serve this district and this community. It's been an honor. I work, I truly work in the best department, which is Human Resources and Personnel Services, and I truly do have one of the best bosses around. So thank you so very much, and thank you again. Bye-bye.
Okay, now I'd like to recognize Larry Sanford, new Executive Director in Personnel Services. Larry Sanford earned his bachelor's degree in economics from East Texas State University. He followed a family tradition and served six years in the United States Air Force. After military service, he obtained his teaching certification and later his master's degree in Educational Administration. His entire 27-year career in education has been with Mesquite ISD. His experience has been focused at the elementary level as a first and sixth grade teacher, Assistant Principal for six years at Hodges and Thompson Elementary, and a Campus Principal for five years at Gentry and Price Elementary. He began working in Personnel Services in 2012 as the Director of Auxiliary Personnel and later the Elementary Director. So congratulations to Larry Sanford.
First off, I would like to thank every member of the board and Dr. Rivera for the trust that you show each and every day in me taking on this new challenge as an Executive Director of Personnel Services. 22 years ago, Ms. Elaine Hornsby hired me for my first administrative position, and I promise you, I'm not saying this just because of her position right now, but I could not, could not have asked for a better mentor and friend as I was learning how to be an administrator. In my roles as Assistant Principal, Principal and Personnel Director, I've always felt the support of the district and the trust of the board. Mesquite ISD is such a special place because of the countless hours you all put in in setting the culture of Mesquite ISD. In 2012, I transitioned to the Personnel Department and was very fortunate to be blessed and blessed to learn from the guidance of Mr. Lanny Frazier and Ms. Mary Randall. We have a great team in Personnel Services, and I look very much forward to the future under the leadership of Dr. Andrea Hensley. I would like to also introduce my wife, Holly Sanford. She is, she's my support system. She followed me around in the military. She taught in Illinois and Idaho, and then we got her back to native Texan where she belongs. But she's a 34-year educator with a great passion for students. My son is an electrician in the district, so we truly love Mesquite ISD. And again, thank you very much for your support and your trust as always. Thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to recognize Lisa Porter, our new Director of Benefits. Lisa earned her bachelor's degree in journalism with a minor in marketing from the University of North Texas. She started a career in insurance and the private industry before becoming a stay-at-home mom. She re-entered the workforce in the Mesquite ISD Benefits Office 19 years ago as a Benefits Secretary before becoming the Benefits Manager five years ago. She earned her Registered Texas School Business Administrator Certification from TASBO in 2016 and has managed the business, the Benefits Department for Mesquite ISD for the past 14 years. Lisa also serves as a Mesquite Educational Per Professional Association Mentor or Mepha. So congratulations to Lisa Porter.
Thank you, board, and thank you, Dr. Rivera, for having faith in me and giving me this opportunity. I'm very excited. I love my job. I love what I do. My family can attest, I've spent many, many late hours working. So I do appreciate, I would like to recognize my families here tonight. My dad and my son, my sister and my fiance, they are the backbone for me, and they know I love what I do, so they don't grab at me too much when I'm up here burning the men out oil. But I really do love what I do, and I have a passion for the people, and I'm helping the people who help the kids. So it's my job just to help them and make them feel a little bit easier with insurance because that can be kind of confusing, and I have a great team. I do want to thank, 19 years ago, Sue Eddy was my first boss, and she, she had faith in me, and she said, you're kind of overqualified for this position, but out of all of them, I think we're just going to give you a chance. And I'm like, thank you. Because re-entering the workforce after being a stay-at-home mom was a little challenging, but this was the best position I could think of to be like a stay-at-home mom, just to still be involved in the kids' schools and be with them every day. So Sue Eddy gave me that chance, and then throughout my career, my benefit staff has always supported me, been there by my side. I haven't had a lot of turnover. They either retired or they moved to Colorado. But I've got a great new team, and they're 100% beside me, and I just, I thank them for what they do, and I thank everybody. Thank you.
And also in the business, or I keep saying that, Benefits Department, we have a new Assistant Director in that department, and it's Heather Titsworth. Heather earned her Bachelor of Science degree at the University of North Texas in Kinesiology. She worked at a pediatric doctor's office verifying insurance prior to working for Mesquite ISD. Heather has been with the Benefits Department since 2021 and has since worked her way up from an Administrative Assistant to her current position as Assistant Director. Heather is also a Mesquite native and a graduate of Mesquite ISD schools. So Heather, will you stand and be recognized?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hensley. The next one, I'm going to introduce the new Assistant Director of Athletics. So Ms. Long, would you please stand where you are so you can be recognized while I read your bio? Whitney Long is a Mesquite product. She attended Austin Elementary, Kimbrough Middle School, and graduated from Potteet High School in 2004 before attending and receiving her degree at the University of Texas in 2008. In addition to having her history degree from University of Texas, Whitney received her Master's in Sports Management from Texas A&amp;M University in 2021. Whitney has spent the past five years at Dr. John Horn High School, serving as the Assistant Athletic Coordinator, Head Girls Basketball Coach, and as a history teacher. She has compiled a head coach record of 102 and 58 during her tenure as a Lady Jags head coach, and has helped lead her team to three district championships and was once voted as District Staff of the Year. Whitney was recognized as the Mesquite ISD Coach of the Year in the 2021-2022 school year by the Athletic Office. Prior to being named as the Head Girls Basketball Coach at Dr. John Horn High School, Whitney coaches an assistant at South Lake Carroll at Horn High School from 2013 to 2016 and at Forney High School. Please help with recognize Whitney Long. Now, Madam President, we're going to move to some principal recognitions. And so the first principal that I'm going to recognize will be DeMarco Grant. So please move to the lectern as I read your bio. DeMarco Grant has completed 11 years in education. He started his career with Mesquite ISD at Kimbrough Middle School as a social studies teacher and coach. He later transitioned to Potteet High School, where he taught social studies and coached football and basketball. Most recently, he served as the Assistant Principal at Wilkinson Middle School for the past four years. Mr. Grant earned a bachelor from University of North Texas and his master's degree in Educational Administration from Lamar University. So take it away, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First and foremost, I want to just thank God for just blessing me to be in the positions to grow with amazing people, for instilling in my heart to choose education. Secondly, I want to thank my beautiful wife, who cannot be here today. She's in Missouri watching. Hey, boo, I love you. Next, I want to just thank my family. I have my support system along with my wife and my family. I have my grandma here, my mom, my Aunt Sherry, my dad, my father-in-law, my mother-in-law, my sister, and my two kids, our two kids, Jason and Journey Grant. My family, I really do cherish them, and they're the reason I'm here today. I want to impact like none before. I want to show my kids and show the people that love me that I can do it for them and that the torch that they gave me, I'm going to pass it on. Next, I would like to thank my Wilkinson family who was here as well. Thank you, guys. The years I was at Wilkinson, I've learned so much. I've grown so much as a man, as a leader, and I just fell in love with this campus, and I am so very. and I am so very proud to have this opportunity to lead them and to further the legacy of being wowed at Wilkinson Middle School. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. The next principal position will be Rugel Elementary School, which will be Selena Solis Batiz. So, move Betidas. So, please move to the lectern. Selena Batidas has completed 21 years in education. She started her career as a third-grade bilingual teacher in Dallas ISD. She transitioned to administration in 2005 and has served as an ESL Strategist, Principal, and most recently Assistant Principal in Grand Prairie ISD at Bonham Elementary School. She earned her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education and her Master's of Education Administration from DBU.
A quick shout-out, I have people in Grand Prairie who are watching, so hi, Bonham. Thank you for still supporting me. So, President Hornsby, Dr. Rivera, esteemed members of the school board, dedicated teachers and staff, proud parents, guardians, and most importantly, the brilliant students who are the heart of our district. I stand before you today with profound gratitude and deep sense of honor as I accept the role of Principal at Rugel. It is with immense excitement and dedication that I step into this position. I would like to express my sincere appreciation to the school board, Dr. Rivera, Dr. Fields, and Dr. Hensley, and the Hiring Committee for entrusting me with this significant responsibility. First and foremost, I would like to acknowledge the extraordinary work of my predecessor. I am humbled by the opportunity to build upon her achievements and to continue to nurture an environment of excellence, compassion, and innovation. To the exceptional teachers and staff members at Rugel, who dedicate themselves to shaping the minds of our future leaders, I am eager to collaborate with you and provide unwavering support. Your dedication to our students' growth and well-being is truly inspiring, and I am committed to fostering a collaborative culture that empowers each of you to excel. I appreciate how you welcomed me. To the parents and guardians, I recognize the trust you place in us to guide and educate your children. Your involvement and partnership are essential in creating a thriving educational community, and I pledge to maintain open lines of communication and transparency to ensure the best possible learning experience for every student. But above all, I want to address our incredible students. You are the reason we are here, and your potential knows no bounds. I am committed to creating an inclusive and nurturing environment where you feel empowered to explore your passion, challenge yourselves, and develop into well-rounded individuals to make a positive impact on the world. Your dreams and aspirations will be at the forefront of every decision I make as a principal. In the coming weeks and months, I look forward to meeting with all stakeholders, stakeholders listening to your insights and working together to build on our strengths and address our challenges. I would like to thank all of the supportive Mesquite ISD personnel for being one phone call away, especially Dr. Goss. She is right in saying, "West Side is the best side." I have with me my inspiration, motivation, and encouragement, my mother, Betty Garza, whose number-one rule was to finish my education. You have helped me change the trajectory of our family. My goal is always to make you proud. Not supposed to write, but that's my mom. So, my motivation, Paul, Aiden, and Ryan. Paul, these are my boys, my three boys. Paul attended Smith, Berry, and Horn. He recently finished at TCU. So, have to go frogs, right? Aiden and Ryan are alum of Smith and Berry, and now both are at Horn. You are my motivation and encouragement to always keep going, and my entertainment when I need a distraction. Last night, I was wondering what to write, what to say, and I wondered if I had the right words to express the gratitude that I have. They were giving me movie quotes, and they were saying, "Just say like the Rocky speech, or just say what the superheroes say." But I have one for you boys. You have been on this journey with mommy from the beginning, and like Tony Stark says, AKA Iron Man, "Everything is going to work out exactly like it's supposed to." And I love you 3,000. I am vested in the Mesquite because I was a parent here first. Now, I am excited to serve as your principal and to contribute to the ongoing success of Rugel Elementary. With your support and collaboration, we will harness the power of education to transform lives, uplift our community, and contribute to a brighter future. I also want to thank my Rugel family there, my leadership team, who has been very welcoming and instrumental in me getting in really quick and getting to work. So, thank you once again for this incredible opportunity.
The next campus principal being recognized will be Shaw Elementary Principal, Dr. Israel Garcia. Please approach the lectern. Dr. Garcia has completed 15 years in education. He started his career as a bilingual teacher at Gray Elementary. In 2014, Dr. Garcia began serving as the Assistant Principal at J.H. Florence Elementary, and later he served as the Frazier Middle School Assistant Principal as well. During the 22-23 school year, Dr. Garcia served in a middle school principal at Cityscape School for one year, but he came back home. He earned a Bachelor's Degree of Art from the Universidad Iberamericana. Dr. Garcia earned a Master's Degree in Educational Administration from Lamar University, and in 2020, while he was employed by Mesquite ISD, he earned his Doctorate Degree in Educational Leadership from Texas A&amp;M University. Dr. Garcia, welcome home.
Thank you so much, sir, members of this board. So, I'm proud of you. Simple words. I'm proud of you were the words that once saved my career in education and probably my future in life. These words came from the man I admired so much when I was a kid, and then growing up. These words came from the man I was so eager to demonstrate that I too could be like him, that I too could be, could start from zero and become a blessing for those around him. These words came from my father. The last Christmas, I spent with him as a family. You see, my father was a man of few words, and I still remember when I shared with him that instead of pursuing my life as a tourney, I was interested in education. I still remember his words. "You're moving where? To become what?" It was during my first year in education that my life was changed by beautiful people, beautiful community here in Mesquite, people who light the spark in me and inspired me to become the man I'm standing today in front of you. It was during these initial years that my father told me, "I'm proud of you." As much as I longed to repeat that Christmas with him, that day never came to be, for instead our family suffered his unexpected loss, and I met my darkest time. Members of this board, educators present in this room, family and friends, today I stand before you thankful for the opportunity to serve our beautiful community as a school principal. During my darkest time, I couldn't understand what our Lord was trying to tell me, but I do now. Every year, as educators, we have the opportunity to connect with so many lives. We create relationships that sometimes are stronger than bloodlines. And it is thanks to these connections, it is thanks to our presence, that simple words such as "you can do this," "I have faith in you," "you are enough," "I'm proud of you" can completely transform lives. Only God knows how many atrocities educators have avoided just by being the light in the life of our students. Only He knows how many lives educators have saved with their presence and encouraging words. It is my firm purpose to support and serve our teachers, our students, and our families so they build the connections they will make of an "I'm proud of you" something life-changing. Thank you so much to my wife, Luz, for being there every step of the way. Thank you for my daughters, Valentina and Victoria, proud to be Galway students, for being my inspiration. Thank you to my mom for seeing in me what I couldn't see. Thanks to my dad, that I know is smiling today right now. Thank you to all my friends and my colleagues for your faith and encouragement. Thank you all, and God bless.
The next person we want to recognize, the new Coordinator of Procurement, would Kelly Burks please stand as I read your bio to be recognized? Ms. Kelly Burks has been in Mesquite ISD for 12 years. She was initially hired to work in the Food Service Department and transitioned to the Purchasing Department in 2015. She has been a buyer and most recently, a senior buyer, supporting all aspects of procurement. Kelly's activities are key pieces to the district receiving the award of Merit for Purchasing Operations through Texas Association of School Business Officials for the past three years. She recently received a TASBO Certification as a Registered Texas School Business Official. Prior to joining Mesquite ISD, Ms. Burks spends over 18 years working in banking, holding positions from bank teller to an assistant vice president. Thank you very much for your contributions to Mesquite ISD, Mrs. Burks, and I know you will do great as a Coordinator of Procurement. And now, we're going to move to an Assistant Principal, and so, Lori Christie Davis, please stand where you are to be recognized. So, Mrs. Davis is the new Assistant Principal from McDonald Middle School. Christie Davis has completed 21 years in the field of education. She began her teaching career as a fifth-grade teacher at Moss Elementary. She taught sixth and seventh grade math and science. In 2014, Mrs. Davis served as a 504 Intestine Coordinator in Rockwall ISD. In 2016, she was a high school counselor in Terrell ISD. Currently, she serves as a counselor/registrar at Frazier Middle School. She has earned her Bachelor of Science from Baylor College of Dentistry and a Master's in Education Administration from Lamar University. Welcome to administration, Mrs. Davis. You'll do great in McDonald Middle School. Madam President, those are all the reports. Now, we move out to an action item?
Just a minute. Mr. Garcia, you didn't introduce your family. Yeah, let us see who they are.
My mom, my daughters, and my wife, my second mom.
Yes, I know that lady. I know that lady. Yes, very lucky. All right, good. This is an action item.
Yes, Madam President, this is an action item. We are going to, well, I'd rather, I'd rather take the vote first and then introduce the candidate, right?
So moved. Second.
They moved by Mr. Carbo and a second by Surg, Mr. Surg. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed by the same vote? Motion carries.
What just occurred was they, we ju, well, they just approved Mr. James Powell as the Assistant Principal for Wilkinson Middle School. Mr. Powell, please stand. So, Mr. Powell has completed nine years in the field of education. He began his teaching career as a middle school teacher and coach at Hempstead Middle School. That's in the Houston area. Mr. Powell also served as a teacher in Grand Prairie and Roy City. In 2018, Mr. Powell became a principal intern in Grand Prairie. For the past two years, Mr. Powell served as a math department chair at Roy City and summer school principal, as well at Roy City High School. Mr. Powell earned a Bachelor of Science from Tarleton State University and a Master's in Education and Curriculum and Instruction in Mathematics. In 2018, Mr. Powell earned his principal certification from Lamar University. Welcome to Mesquite ISD, Mr. Powell. Madam President, those are the only reports from the superintendent.
Thank you. And, you know, congratulations to all of you in your new, new positions, and I wish you the very best from the Board to have a great year, this coming year. So, thank you very much. At this point in time, Board, we're going to take a five-minute break, and so, that way you guys can do what you need to do.
Laura, any pictures? They're all taken.
Is this thing supposed to come on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, my, my name is Macy Dossie. I'm the Director of Health Services, as you are all well aware. I'm very excited tonight because two years ago, when I gave this presentation, it was all about COVID. There we go. It was all about COVID, and I was a wreck, and I think we all were. But today, I actually got an email from Dallas County. I'd actually gotten it a couple days ago, don't tell my nurses, and found out that we no longer have to report COVID cases to the county. So, this is a huge, huge change for all of us with the amount of documentation that went into COVID, and now it's just any other office visit. So, it's really, really a good time for us, and we're celebrating. So, a little bit about our department stats is, there's one director, me, registered nurse. I have a nurse facilitator who's also a registered nurse. I still am currently blessed, thank you so much, with four Esser Float nurses, 55 that are also registered nurses, 55 registered nurses that are in our schools. In, what I've been working on for the past three years specifically is nurse retention. As we all know, in the district, we, it's, it's been really hard to keep staff in, in every form. It's been a hard time. Same thing with nurses. Thirty-six percent of our nurses have been in the district under two years. Fifty-three percent of our nurses have been in the district under three years. So, that's a lot of newbies, and it's, it's been great, though. We've, we've come a long way. But last year, from, from last year to this year, I had 87% of our nurses return this school year, and so I was very, very happy about that. My goal was 90%, but we'll, we'll get it next year. Let's see. Last year, we had 4,062 special procedures provided. So, this is our catheterizations, our G-tube feedings, trait care, things like that. That increased from 3,292 in the 21-22 school year. Our, let's see, health, health conditions, active health conditions, we have 19,300 students with active health conditions. So, that's almost half of our stu, actually, it's more than half of our students. Or right at half. Let's see. Oh, 68,134 medications were administered. This is up about 1,000 from the 21-22 school year. And then, we ha, we saw last year, 150,509 students to the school nurse. That is up 10,000 from the previous year. So, we're growing every year. We're seeing more kids, more procedures, more medications, which is great. And we have a registered nurse at every campus and two at John Horn, which I'm so thankful for. Of course, we need it. There's, you know, 3,000 students there, but we're doing great. Let's see, next slide. I'm also happy to report that Narcan, and we did this in our safety, safety and security update. Was that this ye, this year? Last year?
No.
Okay. Last year, we did a safety and, safety and security update, and we had already gotten Narcan on every single campus, even our elementary schools. And as you know, Senate Bill 629 passed, and it was required that every school that had students sixth grade and above have Narcan on their campuses. We already had it. And not only did we already have it, we have it on our elementary campuses as well. So, we're, we're very happy about that and proud of that. This was new last year. I got a email from Janice Meeks and, sorry, I'm having a, Lee Farley in CTE about asking if the nurses would be interested in mentoring our Vanguard Medical Assistance Students. And I said, they were having a hard time getting them in the hospitals because of COVID and different things, and getting them the hands-on experience that they needed. So, I got with our lawyer and looked at the specifics of how we would do this and it be, you know, HIPAA, FERPA compliant. And we worked through that, and then our nurses.
Hey.
Hey. And then our, our nurses were mentors to these medical aid students. So, during this mentorship, our nurses educated the students on medication administration, individual health plans, trained our students on hearing and vision screenings, as well as stop the bleed and CPR, taught them on immunization requirements, basic assessment skills, charting, and more. And I'm ready for that to play whenever.
We went to Vanguard to train the kids. We trained them with vision and hearing certification, so they would know how to assess and screen the kid's hearing like the school nurses do.
And then, the last day that you were there, we were working on diabetes training, we were working on general first aid, emergency medication, training and everything, so that when they get to a campus, they can be ready to assist the nurse with anything that might come up.
To get out of the classroom and into the field or a real clinic, as you call it, is so important because it gets you out of the book. It's real-life experiences.
I think it's given me the best head start because I'm given more experience than most people have. And so, I think, like, the steps that is taken to get to nursing is going to make us better nurses.
She has a few diabetic students here, so I'd like to learn more about that because my aunt's a diabetic, and ever since I was little, I would always help her. And so, I think just being able to better understand them, that would be my one thing I definitely want to take.
I hope she gets that application, you know? Getting all the info from the textbooks, from her instructors, for sure, but actually seeing it in person firsthand, I'm hoping she can apply what she's learned from that book in real life.
I think it's going to help me a lot because what I've learned from myself, like, in this experience, that I tend to be, like, a little quiet when it comes to patient interactions. And so, I think it's going to help me, like, be able to, like, converse with patients better.
Sometimes, as a new young student, you've never actually even touched somebody else that's not your family. So, just to reach out and touch them, and how do you talk to them? How do you assess them? Those remaining the goals to get comfortable in a clinic.
I mean, we would love to be able to hire them as we have new positions that are opened up. We have clinic aides retiring, and even better would be if they go away to college and come back and want to serve their community like we do.
We're very proud of this program, and especially about, you know, I was talking earlier about retention, and that's kind of one of the things is, you know, hiring our own. I love ner, if I see somebody on the resume and they went to one of our schools, they're vested in this community. And so, that's what's so important, is we're putting in, and hopefully that will someday we'll get back from them. SLR Mobile Vision Clinic, this is an awesome program that we have. Basically, a bus comes, sees children walk on the bus, they are seen by a physician, and they make their glasses, the kids get to pick out their glasses, and they make their glasses the same day, go home with their glasses. If their vision is, is really severe, then they'll get two pairs of glasses, one for home, one for school. If at any point during the year, the kids lose their glasses, break their glasses, they send us new. It's amazing. Last year, 523 exams were given, and 454 glasses were made for our students. They mainly, we only saw, I think we may have seen, like, 10 campuses, and so, we're trying to get them to give us more, but, you know, they, they still go to Dallas a lot. So, we're trying to convince them that we need more of their services, but it's really helpful to our students. Project Adam is a new incentive, or not incentive, but, let's see, project, I don't know. We've partnered with Project Adam and Cook's Children to educate and prepare Mesquite ISD staff on sudden cardiac arrest emergencies and how to respond to them. Last year, we started this program, four schools completed their requirements. That was Wilkinson, Frazier, Potite, and Woolly. They met those requirements to become heart-safe schools, and by the end of the 2024 school year, the entire district will be designated as heart-safe. Basically, this means that we follow certain guidelines and have an annual drill, and along, our administrators are aware of this, and then by the end, it's just promoting knowledge so that we'll be prepared to act in these events. And that is all I have. As always, nursing excellence. Thank you so much.
Yes. Very important part of our district. Thank you so much. Appreciate it very much. Yes. I believe we have a report from Mr. Moore. It's an action item.
Mr. Morris as well.
And Mr. Morris. They're a team.
We are a team, and I'm thankful for, for Mr. Moore and what he's brought to our district. Good evening, President Hornsby and Board. As stated on before you, with an action item, to give the administration's recommendation for armed security services. Last month, we submitted a request for proposal for armed security personnel to meet the standards set forth in House Bill 3 this legislative session. We received seven bids, and a four-member committee evaluated the bids based on preset criteria. The committee determined that the best bid for our district was submitted by LMP Global Security. The total cost to the district will be about $1.9 million. The committee's evaluation of the contractor's reputation, quality, and their understanding of the district's needs indicates they are capable of completing the work required. Therefore, the administration recommends the award of contract for armed security guard services to LMP Global Security. This is an action item, but I can take questions at this time.
Is this the same firm that Wiley ISD is using?
I believe that is true.
And they've used them this last year? What were their, what was Wiley's response to their service?
Jeff, do you want to, I know you've reached out to Wiley.
So, Wiley, as well as a couple other school districts, just signed contracts just recently, but they were very impressed with the customer service and what they provided so far, as well as the, the training that these guards go through prior to being placed in schools. And that was something that we looked at, as well as we were reviewing all the documents. Their stood out with what they train and their guards on prior to placement, as well as reoccurring training. So, but again, Wiley just signed that contract.
Are they going to go through additional training through our Mesquite Police Department? Do we know if that's going to happen?
That's something that I think that as we work and through the bid process, there's no back and forth between us and LMP Global Security. And so, that's something that as we discuss training and discuss, you know, Mesquite ISD level training, so I think about us providing potential training. One thing that's important to note, too, is, is when we submitted this request for proposal, we did it for an 187-day contract, which mirrors the contract that our teachers work. And so, that's for a couple of different reasons. One, they're there when the kids are there, but two, they can be there when the staff is there working as well. In addition, there's the potential for us to have training with them and, in, in connection with LMP Global, that we can train on our standard response protocol and our renification methods and the, and the, the positions and the roles and responsibilities that they'll play within those things as well. And then, the potential for working with our Mesquite Police Department, and, and they go through, we, we do training with them annually as well on nonviolent crisis intervention and things of that nature. And, and LMP and their proposal did go through quite a few things that they do regarding training, more than just the state-required training for a Level III armed security officer, but the, the, to Jeff's point, the continuing education that they do, all of their trainers are T-COLE certified and have 27-plus years of law enforcement expertise, and they do the training within their company, that they train on everything from use of force to nonviolent dispute resolution, physical security and hardening facilities, working with disruptive people, and then emergency preparedness as well. So, we were pretty impressed with the things that they do above and beyond what's required in law.
Are we going to try and keep the same folks at the same schools?
So, that's, that was really important to us, and also within their proposal. They talked about that. They talked about the desire for their guards to, or their officers to understand the dynamics of every school, to be able to work with people, to generally answer the question, you know, where is room 250? And they can point them in the right direction. It was important for us that it's the, a similar face as, as much as possible, that it, it talks about their supervisors, how they place the, the officers in the, in the areas, and that they are familiar with the school, and there's an onboarding procedure and things of that nature. So, ideally, we always have the same people. Obviously, there's turnover and anything like that. We also have asked for three additional officers, and so, we have 34 elementary schools with three additional officers to be able to fill in in the event that somebody's out sick, somebody's, they're, they're working on finding a replacement, and so, we do have the ability to, to backfill as needed.
So, we signed a one-year contract?
This is a two-year initial contract. There is an opportunity to extend the contract for three additional one-year periods after that two years.
And would, would it be safe to say that Jeff is going to be supervising or overseeing?
Supervising is probably not the right, but he is definitely the late, the liaison between Mesquite ISD and LMP.
So, if we, if we have a, one of these contract, these contractors on our campus that is not performing, that goes through the principal to Jeff and then to?
I would almost, I would almost liken it to how we are set up currently with Mesquite Police Department and Ball Springs Police Department. And as we've, you know, had things that a principal might want to share with us, then we work with those departments and their supervisors to intervene as needed. And, but ultimately, the supervisory role lies within the, within the, the LMP Global Security.
So, so, you know, Region 10 has 82 districts, and they're all scrounging for this service. Could they guarantee us at least that, once we sign the contract, they're going to have those 37 available?
That's what we've asked for in the bid. That's the only answer I can give you to that. Guarantees, again, we haven't had those back and forth conversations because it hasn't been appropriate until you, you all vote on it, but those will be some of the conversations that we'll have.
Okay.
I can see that being a concern across the state with however many schools are across the str, the state, and the level of, a Level III armed officer and/or law enforcement officer, it's, it's going to be a struggle across the state. You've seen some of the local districts that have come out and said they, they can't. We're saying right now that we can, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna try, and we're gonna do it.
So, right now, and we've had that conversation, contract is good for two years. So right now, and we've had that conversation, contract is good for two years. If the law changes, we could forget about it. Otherwise, we have the one, one year, the three one-year contracts to hold on to. So after that, then we would have to talk about maybe a different type of contract, right?
We could. Yeah, you know, one of the things you've got to remember too in legislation and the bill passes and then eventually they do a cleanup bill or they get rid of the bill altogether or they add things to the bill. And we know legislative sessions are over two years. So a two-year contract is a pretty safe
Thing, but yeah.
to tackle and, and we'll see how they adjust and then we'll work with, with, with our, our firm and see, see what we can do as we move forward.
This is something that'll work, being managed by Mesquite ISD. They are employees of Mesquite ISD, not?
They are. It's, it's a contracted service. They're employees of LMP Global Securities, just like Mesquite Police Department. They're not our employees. They're the police department's employees.
Okay.
This is a part of House Bill 3, which is an underfunded mandate to over 1,000 school districts and the, the, the revenue from the state on this is minimal. I'm, I'm curious to know, you know, for LMP, I'd like to know how many employees they had in January of this year and how it's so easy for them to be able to come up with these qualified security personnel when, you know, 1,000 school districts are going to have to be involved in this unless they come up with a good cause exception, not a waiver, but, but I'd be curious to know that. I was talking to Jeff earlier to make sure that he's comfortable with this situation. These, these guards will not be involved in disciplining students or directing traffic.
No, sir.
Who will they interact with on the campuses? Do y'all know who that would be?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll interact with administration. They'll interact with teachers. And, and I, you know, I think that interacting with kids and being a positive role model on the campus is not out of the question either. Their prime responsibility is to ensure that the, the school is secure and that they can intervene in the event that they need to. And the events that they need to intervene in are going to be very narrow in scope. You're talking about somebody that's threatening the safety of the campus. You're not talking about the angry mother or father that's there because their, their son or daughter got in trouble or, or got a bad grade. That's not a, a situation that they would intervene in. Specifically in their proposal, they talked about hourly door checks. And so y'all know that as a district, we're checking doors four times a day. And one of the things is, is that every hour, they're checking the exterior. They're checking the parking lot. They're working with people coming in and out and things of that nature. But intervening in a discipline situation is not one of their roles and responsibilities.
What are the ramifications that do we know to our general liability insurance for this? Do you have any idea?
Well, that, you know, we don't waive our immunity with, with the contracted service. We're still, we would still fall underneath that. I will say that Jeff attended a Region 10 kind of FAQ or seminar last week that they reiterated that, that Chapter 37 protects people and security personnel on our campuses and that we, we are still immune to that. Additionally, LMP carries quite a bit of their own liability insurance, workers' comp and things of that nature as well.
So they've done this before because they just signed with Wiley and some other schools. They're already doing this for some school districts?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
That was important for us too. Somebody that has been in the schools, that understands the dynamics around House Bill 3, that was important as we looked at these things and references as well.
Do we have a plan B? I say that in regards to, we have a Friday before spring break or a day that comes up where there, the possibility is always there that there are three or four employees short to provide to them ISD. What, how do we fill those spots? Is the onus obviously in the contract on them to fill those spots, that inevitable phone call? Maybe it never happens, but they call in and go, hey, we just, we don't have the people today. There's a flu, whatever's going around. Do we have a backup plan so we don't get dinged by the state for not having coverage?
I think that's something that we'll work on with them. I will say in the proposal, it talks about the supervisor. There's a supervisor that, that is over the officers, that they're, it's their responsibility to backfill in, in those situations. And so that's something that we'll work on them. That's one of the reasons we got the three additional. But you're right, there could be a day when, when four are out and what do we do in those situations? For sure.
Yeah, and these questions aren't to, you know, we have no reason to think that the company itself is not a legitimate company. I'm sure that they are. If they've entered other contracts with other districts, but is there a representative here that could, I mean, would it be appropriate for us to engage him?
There is a representative here. We did contact LMP and we told them that we were recommending them to the board.
Sure.
The appropriateness of them speaking before a vote, I'm not sure about that.
No, because we need to vote on the item first. They're not contracted until we actually take the vote. It's still part of the RFP process, so we can have it in that order.
Wait, say that again. Say that again.
This is, this is an action item? Part of, part of the RFP process has to be approved first.
Okay.
And this is an action item as presented by Mr. Morris. And then after the vote takes place, then?
Then ask more questions.
You may be able to.
Okay, then.
This $1.9 million is not currently in the budget. Is that right, Gilbert? So we'll have an amended budget if this gets approved to add that to the budget?
We're looking, yeah, we're looking into that.
Well, it is not, it is not in the current approved budget, as you probably could tell, because the House bill was passed after we approved our budget, we're written into law. But there is a plan. I just need to get the vote first.
To that, to that point.
Already.
To that point, Mr. Seward, to that point, we get an additional $750,000 from the, from the state, $15,000 per campus. That's additional to what they've given us in safety and security dollars. That pays for less than half of what this is going to cost. So the idea, yes, there's about $1.2 million still left on the table that we're going to have to figure out where that's coming from.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
This is an action item?
Madam President, I move that we approve the contract for the armed service, the security services as presented for $1.9 million with LMP Global. Second, and I, and again, you know, Tyler and Jeff, we, we trust you two guys for vetting this company. And I, I wasn't trying to go, you know, around the circumstance, but I would be curious to know how many employees that this company had in January this year prior to now and how, why it's so easy for them to come up with these security personnel.
We have a motion by Mr. Seward and the second?
Before you take, Madam President, you, Mr. Morris, you want to talk about the training? How they train their staff? I mean, that's important.
I was going to say that, that they are a licensed in-house training. They, they don't have to outsource any of the training to get level three certified folks. And I think that goes a long way to how, you know, they can recruit and then retain, retain people as well. So that, you know, the training they did, I mentioned a lot of those things that, that they, that they do in-house. One, train to become level one, then level two, then level three, and then potentially level four, security officers. And then the continuous, the continuing education that they do that's beyond the scope of what's required is, is one of the other things that impressed Jeff and I.
Madam President, just one point to answer some of Mr. Everett's questions. There's 1,025 districts, school districts in the state of Texas, but not all of them are going to need that type of service because they have their own police force already. So it, it's not, you know, that the pool is everybody's going to be looking for it. And I wanted to make that clarification.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Mr. Seward, a second by Mr. Everett. All those in favor, is there any more discussion before we move on? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those nay, say nay, please. Motion carried. Okay. Now we can talk to you. Is there any other things that you need from?
So when you were going through the process of reading the other entrants or what are, what are we going to call them? People who applied?
Bids.
Bids. Like, what made this one stand out the most?
Me personally, and the, it's interesting going through this process. We don't, the, the four people that scored this don't talk to each other about it. And so I don't know what stood out to Jeff like this stood out to me. But the training that they provide, the fact that it's in-house, that it's T-Cole certified instructors was important to me. Their plan that they laid out was robust. It was detailed. The, the, you know, as we read through the seven, they're, they're from all spectrums, you know, good, bad, whatever. They stood out as somebody that had paid attention to details, had, they have a plan for retention, they have a plan for onboarding, and they have a plan for working with the school district. You could tell that they, they, they paid attention to that. They talked about that, that they're here to serve us. They were specific about, obviously, they are the end-all for the supervisory role, but they are working partners with our, with our school and that they're client, which they referred to us a few different times, their client. And their officers would work together to do what's best for that campus. And so, you know, to me, the training and, you know, that's the biggest thing that I've been apprehensive about. And y'all know how I feel about our relationship with the Mesquite Police Department and Bolt Springs Police Department and what they've provided our schools and that working relationship is phenomenal. Great back and forth. When they have a need, we respond. When we have a need, they respond. And I look forward, I felt the same feeling as I read through this proposal with LMP.
So this wouldn't undercut that relationship at all?
No, ma'am.
Okay, then I'm good. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Okay, we have another action item from construction, Mr. Don Poole.
Where's the tie? I didn't have the YouTube video pulled up, so I couldn't tie it on my own. We're here tonight to recommend the approval of construction manager at risk for Gentry Elementary as the construction manager for the construction.
So move second.
Eddie Rose, it was motion by Mr. Rose, a second by Mr. Everett. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
That's why the tie wouldn't.
Boy, that was easy. Ooh, I know it.
Should have drilled him for an hour.
I know it.
All right, we'll do a hilltop.
All right, business. Is this Mr. Prado?
Yes.
Mr. Prado, you're on.
Oh, good. He's not asking for more money.
So he's a science person, huh?
Good evening, President Hornsby, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Rivera. Before you, you have an item to consider regarding a resolution to accept the certified values for tax year 2023. I'll give you just a couple of numbers from comparisons from last year. Last year, assuming that we kept the $40,000 homestead exemption compared to certified values in 2022, compared to $40,000 this year, our growth in taxable value would have been by approximately $1.9 billion. That is a 15% increase from year to year. However, what you're approving is the certified values with 100,000 home exemption, which it will have to be voted on still in November. But if you don't vote on it, then I would be very surprised. So that is what you have in front of you to consider today. And I'll answer any questions related to that.
Mr. Prado, is it my understanding that if it does passes, that we'll be held harmless? Because we've already built in our budget, we use $40,000. Is that correct?
That is correct. On the maintenance and operations, there's still some little clarity that needs to be, happen on the INS side. But again, that is the intent that I understand. Yes, sir.
Is there any more discussion? This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Okay, Mr. Everett and Ms. Collier is second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, by the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Okay, Mr. Prado, is that who we do? All right, you're back.
Well, thank you very much for approving that. The next item for you to consider, there's a potential here for your consideration related to a potential refinance on some bond debt for some variable debt. With me today, I have Mr. Jason Hughes. He's the Managing Director of Hilltop Securities. He'll be doing a presentation for you and will be more than happy to answer any questions related to the topic. As well as Ms. Kristen Savant. She's a partner at Norton Rose Fulbright, who's also here for the topic. So, Mr. Jason Hughes.
Welcome, sir. How are you?
I remember him.
I do. I remember him.
President Hornsby, trustees, Dr. Rivera, it's great to be back with you tonight. I certainly appreciate that. My partner, Chris Vasquez, is handing out a presentation. This is exactly the same thing that you have on your screen. As he's handing that out, I will say I'm a little shocked. Whenever I first walked in, I assumed that everyone was here to talk about or listen to refunding bonds. So the fact that this is all that's left is, is surprising. So, oh, they're watching. Okay, all right, fantastic. So, so it has been some time since I've been before you. And just as a quick kind of recap, we had our final issuance in June 2020 of the New Money Bonds that went back to the May 2018 bond election. And then in 20, September 2021, we actually issued about $67 million worth of refunding bonds to refund three different issues. Since then, if you go back to 2022, we started to see increase in rates, certainly in the short-term rates as the Fed was raising rates, as well as in long-term rates. But we do have, as Mr. Prado said, we do have the opportunity tonight, or the district has the opportunity to refund some of the variable rate bonds. So what I'm going to do is go through these presentation topics. I'll move very quickly, but certainly let me know if you'd like for me to provide any more detail. But I thought it would be worthwhile, since we're talking about refunding variable rate debt, just to quickly talk about the district's history with variable rate debt. The variable rate debt that we're looking to refund actually has an interest rate swap or a derivative on it. And I'll talk a little bit about that, what that is and how that acts. I'll go through the, quickly the swap mechanics and then the finance plan, which is ultimately, the recommendation is to refund these variable rate bonds with fixed rate bonds and also terminate that swap. So I'll talk about that. And then that parameter bond order, which is the actual action item you have on your agenda, will kind of tie all of that together. So the history of variable rate bond issuances, the district has issued two sets of variable rate bonds back in 2020, or beg your pardon, in 2000, June of 2000, you issued $40 million. The original final maturity on that was August 2025. One of the nice thing is though, is you actually paid that off much quicker and fully paid those off in 2020. Those bonds, whenever they were first issued, were actually issued for tax rate management purposes. That was one of the things that helped. And then of course, again, as I said, since you paid those off early, then your citizens enjoy the interest rate savings by those being paid off a good five years in advance. In August of 2003, you issued variable rate bonds, $30 million, with the final maturity of August 2029. That one was a little bit different. That's what we're talking about refunding. That also had the interest rate swap on the top of it. It just says, kind of to put some context to this, after you issued those 2003A variable rate bonds, about 18% of your debt portfolio was in variable rate. Said another way, it made up a relatively small percentage overall of the debt that the school district had outstanding at the time. Now, as I said, on the 2003A, there is an interest rate swap overlay on top of that. And so what that simply means is a swap is a contractual agreement for two parties to exchange payments over a period of time. And in this case, the two parties are Mesquite ISD and your swap counterparty, which is JP Morgan. That swap agreement is an investment contract and the swap agreement, the actual value of it fluctuates over time. And it fluctuates on three main items. As you can see there, the principal amount of the swap contract, that's a little under $16 million. That matches the bonds. That remaining time, the swap is outstanding. Again, that matches the bonds also. Those bonds have a final maturity of August 2029. And then as you can see there, the interest rates. The swap, what's interesting about it this is it has an inverse relationship with those rates. So as we've seen rates go up, the value of that and what's owed by the district has actually gone down. And so we are at a point where you can terminate that swap. And I'll go through that on the next couple of pages here, but you can terminate that swap and get out of the swap completely. The reason that that was put in place back in- The reason that that was put in place back in 2003 is so you would have a lower fixed rate that you would pay than you otherwise could have received if you actually went out and issued fixed rate bonds. So it was just a lower cost of capital in 2003. So I'm going to quickly go through the swap mechanics, just because I think it's important to kind of see what you have right now and what the recommendation is that you move to. So again, in August 2003, $30 million of variable rate debt was issued. You can see there, Mesquite ISD pays its bondholders. You pay a variable rate, and that variable rate is based off of CIFMA. CIFMA is simply a short-term tax-exempt municipal bond index. So that's what you're paying to your bondholders. Those bonds are remarketed on a weekly basis. And all that simply means is that the holders are given the option to go ahead and hold those at whatever the prevailing market rate is at that time, or they can actually turn those bonds in, for lack of a better way of putting it, and they can be remarketed to a new investor. And so that happens again on a weekly basis. That's called a remarketing. And step two, so as you had those variable rate bonds outstanding, you also have two entities that are involved in that process. The first is a remarketing agent, which, as I said, I just went through, they're the ones that are remarketing that on a weekly basis. The second is the liquidity provider. And what they are there for is in the event of a failed remarketing, which we actually had going back to 2007, 2008, and the financial crisis that was going on then, that liquidity provider stepped in and bought those bonds. What that keeps Mesquite ISD from having to do is to come up with $20 million, just as an example, or $30 million to come in and actually take those bonds on that day. So that's why that liquidity provider is there. So as you can see there, they do receive a fee for that. Again, to give you some context, that fee this past year was approximately about $130,000. So not insignificant to have those bonds outstanding. On the swap mechanics, as you can see there, the actual swap itself, so Mesquite ISD, remember that swap is an agreement to exchange payments. Mesquite ISD pays a fixed rate of 4.458%, so that has not changed since 2003. And then the last portion there, as you can see there, the contractual payment that the swap provider, JP Morgan, is providing to you is a variable rate payment equal to CIFMA. So a lot of things going on here. So stay with me, we're almost through the, this portion of it here. Effectively, what happens after going through all those, the swap mechanics, if you look down in the right-hand side, what is happening is that variable rate payment that's received from JP Morgan basically offsets your payment to your bondholders. And what you're left with is a fixed rate, again, that fixed rate plus the support costs, which is less than what you could have received on a fixed bond rate 2003. So now that gets us to the finance plan. What we are recommending, or what I'm recommending, is issuing tax-exempt fixed rate bonds to take out the 2003A variable rate bonds. And at the same time, we terminate the swap agreement. So one of the questions you may have is why now? Why are we looking at this now? If you see there that termination value, again, you saw where the Fed started raising rates in March of 2022. As those rates have gone up, generally speaking, that termination value has gone down. So you can see there, February 1, 2022, what was owed by Mesquite on that swap contract, $2.5 million. As those rates have gone up now, that termination, as of yesterday, or beg your pardon, as of Friday, was $634,000. So it's come down significantly. So in going through, again, the recommendation, I think there are several goals that are achieved here. You do have excess debt service fund balance. That debt service fund balance is used only on debt, and so that's used to, to pay off debt. So the nice thing is, we can contribute that, as we've done on past refundings, to that. You're issuing less bonds, right, by contributing that in there. So a combination of the less debt plus those lower fixed rates means that you have less annual debt service, and if you were to move forward on the bond election in the future, you'd have some extra capacity in those years, 2024 through 2029, which happened to be the years in which your debt service is highest. So you have that. Those support costs that I went through to the liquidity provider, to the remarketing agent, those will be taken out completely by virtue of not having variable rate debt outstanding. And then the last thing there, you see, you do have swap reporting requirements. So GASB 53, this is accounting and financial reporting for derivative investments. Once you completed that, once you got rid of the swap after that audit, then you'd be done completely with reporting that. So again, I think that there are several goals there. The one thing I did want to go through, because Mr. Prado and I had talked about this a number of times, actually, we're not using all of the debt service fund balance. As he alluded to, there are still some questions as it relates to the homestead exemption going from 40,000 to 100,000. You still receive IFA and EDA funding on your debt. And so I've talked directly with TEA, and they were very forthcoming in basically saying, we're still working through exactly what that looks like. And while they're going to make their payments in the fall, they said it'd probably be closer to February of next year before they kind of fully have that worked out as far as what that does. So again, Mr. Prado basically said, there's still some questions there, so we didn't want to use all that fund balance. The other nice thing is, this does not prohibit you from using any debt service fund balance in the future. So that's the nice thing. So last time, I will show a graphic like this. Again, on the left-hand side, that's your current structure. So what we would call for is those variable rate bonds would be refunded, the support cost eliminated, and the swap terminated. It would be replaced with the right-hand side of that graphic. So Mesquite ISD would issue those fixed rate bonds. Once we undertook that transaction, then you'd have a straight fixed rate paid to the bondholders. So what we're asking for your approval tonight is a, simply a parameter bond order, and this is how we've sold debt in the past. So allowed under Section 1371 of Texas Government Code, what you, what we're asking is that you delegate your final pricing authority to your pricing officers. What that allows us to do is it allows us, once we get to the point where we sell the debt, once we have our credit ratings, things of that nature, where we can move on any date. And so if interest rates move against us, if it's not as favorable, we don't have to do anything. Interest rates move in our favor, we can capture as much savings as possible, we can move very quickly, and we don't have to be captive to a board meeting date. So you'll establish the bond sale parameters, and I'll go through those in just one minute. The nice thing about this is all the parameters have to be met. So if there's any single one parameter that's not met, we legally cannot do the transaction. So bond parameter order, the proposed parameters, the delegated pricing officers are the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations. Maximum principal amount, $15,915,000. That matches what is outstanding on those 2003A variable rate bonds. Maximum true interest cost of 4.25%. If we were to price this transaction today, we'd be at about 3.5%. So we have given ourselves a little bit of cushion in there in case rates go up. We have gross savings of $5 million. That actually is taking into account a little lower debt service fund contribution than what we're, we're thinking we're going to use, but again, to provide some flexibility. That final maturity date, those bonds currently mature, August 2029, we're not extending that out. So it'd still be August 2029. And then that last thing, the delegation expiration, if for whatever reason you approve it and we can't move, whether that's interest rates or some other occurrence, then this would expire in 180 days, and we'd have to come back to you to get approval again. So, so that is my presentation. Again, Kristen Savant is here from Norton Rose Fulbright, Bond Counsel for the District. She also has Travis Lyle, her partner, with her, and we'd be happy to answer any kind of questions you may have.
You know, on the Whitley Penn Audit, on page 45, they had addressed the interest rate swap. You, you've probably seen that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I had a lot of, I had a lot of questions for you here, Jason, but you seemed to answer most of them, so.
Fantastic.
I appreciate that. What is, what is the basic difference between, I know this is a swap, what is the basic difference between this type of refunding and a typical bond refunding?
So typically, and what the district has done in the past is you've actually refunded other fixed rate debt. And that's probably more akin to a home refinancing, where if you have a home mortgage of 6% and at least up until the last couple of years, you could refund it down to 3%. That's exactly what we were doing typically, and usually doing on an annual basis here at the district. This one, though, we do have that extra step of, again, we're taking out that variable rate debt, but then we do have to terminate that swap. So that's the main difference here. And again, why I want, I know it's a little bit longer and, and there's a number of graphics and things, but why I wanted to kind of go through that and explain exactly what's being recommended.
We're just taking the debt, the, the variable, and we're going back on more of a fixed rate.
It would take.
So for Mr. Prado, his planning will be a lot simpler.
Streamlined.
We're doing this for you.
It's the taxpayers.
And the taxpayers.
So you said that what you estimate is the maximum gross saving or minimum would be about $5 million. Is that because, what's the variable rate right now?
So the variable rate, if you think about the swap rate plus your support cost, is about 5.15%.
Okay.
And so that's, and the one thing I would say is that rate was lower by virtue of your support costs were lower whenever you first entered into this. We saw support costs go up from the banks, going back to '07, '08, when it became much more expensive for them. Guess what? They passed those costs on to you. The one thing I would say too, and I know I'm giving you more than what your question was, but we have looked at this in the past. And I was trying to kind of go back and do some research. I couldn't find exactly when it was, but I know whenever Dr. B was Superintendent, whenever Catherine was here, we actually looked at it, and at that time, we were issuing new money bonds, and we were going to be very close to the 50 cent test. So we chose, rather than coming to you and terminating that swap, we actually used some excess debt service funds to take out some other debt to make sure that we could pass that 50 cent test.
So what kind of capacity you think this is going to give us if this were to go through?
I'm sorry?
What kind of capacity do you think we'll have if this were to go through?
In those years, so 2020, '05, '06, '07, '08, what I have estimated about $1.8 to $1.9 million per year.
Okay.
And that's using, you know, of course, the debt service fund contribution, but that's what's been estimated.
Okay. Cool.
Cool. Makes sense. This is an action.
Madam President, I move to adopt the order authorizing the issuance and sale of Mesquite Independent School District Unlimited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2023, establishing perimeters for the sale and issuance of such bonds and delegating certain matters to authorize district officials.
Sir, say. Robert Seward does the motion, a second by Gary Bingham. Is there any more discussion?
Assuming everything stays like it is, how quickly would we move on this?
So the soonest we would move would be October, because one thing, and it's a great question, by federal tax law, we have to get within 90 days of the call date, which is February 1, 2024. That would be the soonest we would move. So it would be October with the November close, maybe somewhat after that, depending on the rate environment, the market.
So Jason, if the Fed jack up and we have to wait longer than six months, we have to come back?
Yes, sir.
That was my question. Yep. All those, all those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We always like to save money.
Yes, yes. All right. Mr. Prado. You know the blue. I like your Dallas Cowboy blue.
The Dallas Cowboys blue? The Superintendent failed to say that Kelly Burks was truly, is a Saints fan.
No, 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 no.
She was born in New Orleans.
Cut off, cut off, cut off.
Thank you. Before you, you have a budget amendment number one. You probably haven't seen something of this nature before, maybe you have a purchase order rollover. There's items that we didn't receive, and it's all listed on this document. A big piece was the security initiative, about $2.3 million that we're carrying forward to next year. So again, it's just to complete some of the items, some of the projects that we had in place, and that's what we're asking you to do. Typically, these funds will go to the fund balance, and then I just ask you to take it back from the fund balance to allocate it to those departments.
This is an action item. Mr. Carbo, and a second by Mr. Bingham. Okay, no, sorry. I know that. Sorry about that. I was going to give you the second, but that's okay. Sorry about that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I just insulted you, didn't I, Mr. Everett?